In this live EA study session, we're going to discuss topics for part two, including gift tax, gift splitting, trusts, and then we'll have a live Q and A at the end. Okay, can you see my little slides?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're gonna just talk about part two this evening. I feel like we're just gonna focus on that. But like I was just telling John, the scope of part two is really huge. We'll have plenty to talk about. And if you have any questions as we go along, just, you know, put them in the chat or do the little hand raising thing. The questions that I'm going to be discussing in this study session are from an actual exam, one of the prior exams that the IRS had released. And if you want to download the older sample exams, we have them on the Passkey online website. So the LMS, the Learning Management System, has been transferred to HAWK. But there's still links to the textbooks on the Passkey website and there's still download. You can download older sample questions there. If you go to this link, passkeyonline.com, and then just scroll to the bottom of the page, they're all right there. So these questions are actual exam questions that have been released by the IRS in the past. And the only thing that I really did with these is I changed the dates. So if they were, you know, saying the year 2004 or whatever, I changed it to the current year. Now, a lot of those questions on this older sample exams, I feel like they're really useful to study from. You just have to remember that many of that tax law is no longer valid after the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, and a lot of the thresholds are not right. I still feel like that content, those older exams are really useful, at least to understand the verbiage. Because the IRS uses a lot of convoluted verbiage, like tricky wording, on the exam questions, and that's especially true on part three. They will ask you, um, you know, like, what's the false answer? Do you know that sort of thing? And you have to look for the answer that's wrong, which I feel is like really counterintuitive while you're taking a test. But like I said, I feel like those older exams are really useful to just kind of learn the type of questions and the wording that you're gonna see when you sit down. So, oh, the first thing that I'm gonna discuss is this. This question has come up multiple times already in the forum, and I wanted to discuss it. This is a question about compensation from court settlements. Now, companies can be sued and individuals can be sued. Individuals can receive settlements and companies can receive settlements. Most of the time, I wanna say 99% of the time, a court settlement is gonna be taxable. It's gonna be a taxable event, and that's especially true if it's a court settlement from a business. You know what I mean? If I sue another business, you know, for, let's say, copyright infringement or something like that, and they have to pay me a settlement, then that settlement is gonna be taxable to my business, or it's gonna be taxable to me if I'm suing them as an individual. But this particular question or this topic seems to really confuse people. This is a question that's in the textbook as well as on the LMS. And this question is about a taxpayer who was injured. They were injured in a train wreck and they suffered serious physical injuries. Now, many times, the injury will occur in one year, and then you won't actually receive a settlement until many, many, many years later. Everybody knows that, right? The courts are like molasses sometimes, and you won't get a settlement until many years down the road. If you have a lawsuit and you receive a settlement from a court, then if the lawsuit, if the origin of the claim was a physical injury, then the compensation that you receive for pain and suffering, as well as for something like lost wages and reimbursement for medical bills, that is not going to be taxable. Okay, if the origin of the claim was an injury, a physical injury, then the compensation that you receive for lost wages, reimbursement of medical bills, and a settlement for pain and suffering, if it says pain and suffering, then that is not going to be taxable. Now, if you receive interest, which many times will be part of a court settlement, interest on the money that you should have had, right? Because this litigation has taken years and years. If you receive interest, then the interest is taxable, whether it's physical injury or not. Okay? Now, the other thing that you have to remember is, if you have a situation, this was my answer. Awards for lost wages and lost profits are generally gonna be taxable because most court awards are not because of injury or illness. Like, for example, if I sued my boss for age discrimination or sex discrimination or something like that, and I received a big settlement, even if I felt like harassed, do you know what I mean? If I was like a harassment suit and they were calling me names or whatever, that's not a physical injury. So I, that's all gonna be taxable to me. Okay? The only exception to that rule is if you have like a harassment lawsuit or something, and I end up having, uh, physical problems because of it. Like, I have to go to a psychiatrist because I have depression or whatever, then I, potentially, the reimbursement for my medical expenses related to that harassment case would be non-taxable. But the settlement itself for harassment, then that's going to be fully taxable because it's not for a physical injury or physical sickness. In that example that I was showing you, the MCQ, the taxpayer was injured. So the origin of the claim is what matters. If there's an injury to your reputation or something like that, then that is gonna be taxable. That's gonna be a taxable event. It has to be a physical injury where I'm actually hurt. Okay? Now, any interest earned on a court award like that, whether it's for physical injury or not, is gonna be fully taxable as interest. And then if you have a situation where you receive a court award and it's for punitive damages, then that's also gonna be taxable, and that's true whether the claim was for a physical injury or not. I've had other tax practitioners ask me about, specifically about punitive damages. I'm not an attorney, and I don't know why, you know, in certain cases punitive damages are awarded or not. But punitive damages are always awarded by a court or a jury. They're awarded by a judge or a jury. Punitive damages don't occur when it's just like a settlement that's being hashed out between lawyers. Punitive damages are awarded by a court, and they're awarded by a court in order to punish a defendant. Like, okay, this company was doing something really bad that they shouldn't have been doing. They were, you know, committing a massive fraud, or they knew that their product was gonna kill people, and they didn't recall it, whatever. That's exactly what happened with the Ford Pinto, which is why I talk about it in the webinars. In that case, the plaintiffs were awarded punitive damages because the, that company knew, they knew that the product was faulty. In that case, always taxable. Punitive damages and interest on an award. Okay? So this question has come up several times, and I just want you to remember that for the test. All right, now, this is a part two question, and it's true or false. I decided to do, sprinkle a couple of these, true and false, and then multiple choice, and we'll see how far we go. Now, when a taxpayer, this is all business questions now, okay? When a taxpayer operates two or more separate and distinct businesses with separate and distinct books and records, the same accounting method must be used for both businesses. So if I have two Schedule C businesses, a car wash, and I have a tax practice, I'm an individual human. If I have two Schedule C businesses and I have two separate and distinct books and records, I still have to use the same accounting method for both businesses. Is that true or false?
That's false.
Sounds like false.
False.
You guys are right. If you operate two or more separate and distinct businesses, you can use a different accounting method for each business. Okay, you guys are right. So if I have a tax business and a car wash, and I have separate books and records, I can use accrual for one, and I can use cash for the other. Okay?
Okay.
Got it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. All right, the next one. A cash method taxpayer, if this is a cash method business, may use the non-accrual experience method of accounting for bad debts if he or she qualifies under the applicable rules. Is this true or false? This is, this is about accrual-based businesses, folks, so this is tricky. Okay.
Sounds like false.
Yeah. If you have a cash-based business, they cannot use this method. And that's because the non-accrual experience method is an accounting standard that accounts for bad or delinquent debts. Where basically, an accrual-based business can estimate how many of their vendors are not gonna pay them. They basically estimate a percentage. Because remember, when you're in an accrual-based business, you basically have to recognize the income as it's earned, not when you actually receive it. So only an accrual-based business can use this method, and they're the only ones, they're allowed to write off uncollectible bad debts. Because the whole, the whole idea is that as an accrual-based business, they've already recognized the income. Right? With a cash-based business, if you bill somebody for, like, tax services, for example, if you're on a cash method, if you bill somebody for tax services and they don't pay you for that invoice, you can't write off the amount of that invoice because you don't actually have an expense. I mean, you lost your time, and hopefully you learned a lesson, but you don't get to write off that invoice or the amount of that invoice because you never recognized the income in the first place. Okay, so the non-accrual experience method applies only to accrual-based businesses. Usually, we're talking about corporations here. A partnership is not considered to engage in a trader business and is not required to file a Form 1040, I'm sorry. It's not required to file a Form 1065 for any tax year in which it neither receives income nor pays or incurs any expenses treated as deductions or credits for federal income tax purposes. Is this true or false?
That's true.
Does a partnership have to file a tax return if it has no activity?
No.
That's true.
Partnership does have to file a tax return if they'll have no income.
That is true. A partnership does not have to file a tax return if it has no activity. Corporations are not like this. Corporations have to file every single year that they are in existence. And that's true whether it's a C corp or whether it's an S corp. Once you form that thing, it has a filing requirement. Partnership is not the same. A partnership can just, can have no activity. And in that, in the years that it has no activity, it doesn't actually have to file a tax return. In real life, the IRS usually will send the partnership a notice, and they'll request a tax return. But I'll tell you, um, the IRS will still try to impose penalties, even if the partnership is filing a zero tax return with no activity. So my suggestion is to either file that partnership tax return before the deadline anyway, even if there's zero activity. If you've already formed the partnership and requested the EIN, is what I'm saying. Is to just file that tax return with zero on it, if it actually did have no activity for the year. Or if you're already past the filing deadline and you know the partnership is gonna get hit with penalties, then you write a letter to the IRS and you say that the partnership doesn't have any filing requirement because it had no activity for the year. But when, when we're talking about no activity, we're really talking about no activity. That means not even a dollar. So there have, there have been partnerships in the past that I've worked with that have gotten in trouble for that. You know, they swear you up and down that they had no activity whatsoever, but then they had, you know, $10 worth of interest in the bank account that they set up. And if that happens, and there's a 1099 floating around out there, the IRS is gonna wanna see a tax return, and the penalties are huge. Like, over $250 a month. For every month, the return is late, and, and then on top of that, an additional $250 plus for every partner in the partnership that their Schedule K1 is issued to them late. So generally, it's better to just file that tax return and get it filed. If there's no activity, but the partnership has already been formed, and, you know, especially if it's bought assets or whatever, maybe bought land, and even if it's just sitting there. Okay? But technically, a partnership is not required to file a tax return if it has zero activity for the year. So no items of income or loss. Okay? Now, uh, next one. Generally, if a shareholder transfers a liability to a corporation along with the property, and the transferred liability exceeds the adjusted basis in the property transferred to the corporation, gain is recognized up to the amount of the difference between the adjusted basis of the properties and the fair market value of the liabilities assumed. Oh, this is complicated, but this has been on multiple exams in the past. Do you think this is true or false?
That's true.
That, that's correct. It's true. If you transfer property with a liability attached, like, let's say I transfer a building to my corporation, or I transfer a vehicle to my corporation. Okay? And the fair market value of that asset is worth less than the liability attached to it. And then the corporation basically takes over the payments, takes over that, takes over that liability. That's the idea, that the corporation is gonna take over that debt. But the value of the asset that you transferred isn't worth the amount of the debt. Like, let's say I transfer a truck to a corporation, and I bought that truck new, but it's like many years old now. The fair market value of the truck is $5, whatever it's. But I still owe like $60,000 on that truck because I got a really bad deal on the loan. Then, if the corporation takes over that, um, takes over that loan, and it's worth a lot more than the value of the asset that's transferred, then the shareholder has to recognize gain, has to recognize gain. To the extent the aggregate amount of debt transferred to the corporation exceeds the shareholder's basis in the property transferred, the computation of gain in this situation is applied on a shareholder-by-shareholder basis, and this is assuming that there's a bona fide business reason exists for the transfer. Because if you, if you do transfer an asset to a corporation and you don't even have a business reason for it, you just want the corporation to be taking over your debt, then, then that's worse. That's bad. But in this case, if you do actually have a bona fide business reason, like, okay, so I'm gonna use this truck in the business, or I'm transferring a building because I, I do plan to use it in the business, but the fair market value of the building is worth less than what you actually owe the mortgage, and the corporation takes over those payments, then the shareholder has to recognize gain because they're being relieved of a debt. Okay, does anybody, um, does anybody have any questions as of right now yet?
No, I'm good.
We're good? Okay. This is another kind of tricky one. An S corporation's items of income, loss, deductions, et cetera, are allocated to the shareholder on an annual basis according to the number of shares of stock held by that shareholder on the last day of the tax year of the S corporation. Is this true or false?
True.
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 Everybody thinks it's true? Okay. Answer is false. Answer is false. Okay, this is another tricky, tricky wording. Items of income, loss, deductions are allocated to the shareholder on a daily basis, not an annual basis. You file a tax return for an S corp on an annual basis. That's certainly true. But what happens if one, if you have five shareholders and one of them bows out in the middle of the year? Or sells their stock to somebody else in the middle of the year? Or one dies in the middle of the year? Then that's, that wouldn't be the case because you can have a situation where somebody owns 10% of the company at the beginning of the year, and then like in June, they, they now own 20% of the company. Okay? And most of the time, what we see in practice is just single shareholder S corps, or maybe two people, and the stock doesn't really change during the year, but it can. That's why items of income or loss are allocated to the shareholder on a daily basis. And this is right from the 1120S instructions, by the way. 11, yeah, 1120S instructions, the S corporation tax return instructions according to the number of shares of stock held by the shareholders on each day during the tax year of the corporation. Okay, I got a hand, uh, going up. Go ahead, Robin.
This is just a general question. Um, are there many true, false on the exams?
No, they're all multiple, they're all multiple choice. They're all multiple choice. Um, these questions, these questions are actually from old exams.
Okay.
And, um, I took them because I feel like true, false is faster to get through than counting off those four. I have some multiple choices later on in the webinar. Um, they're, they're, they're not gonna be true and false. But what I have noticed, what I have noticed is on the more recent exams, a lot of these questions are kind of the same. And what they do is they just add, you know, four answer choices. But, you know, the, the verbiage or the wording is gonna be similar to this. Okay? True or false? Funeral expenses of the decedent may be deducted on Form 1040, U.S. Individual Income Tax Return for the year of death. Is this true or false?
False.
False.
Now we know it's false.
Okay, everybody. Okay. You're all, funeral expenses cannot be deducted on the Form 1040 or the Form 1041. Okay, can't be deducted on the Estate Income Tax Return. Funeral expenses are only deductible on the estate tax return, not, not the Form 1041, but the Form 706. Funeral and burial expenses can be deducted if they were paid out of the estate of the deceased person. A reasonable expenditure, I actually looked this up today because I was like, what would qualify? A reasonable expenditure for a tombstone monument or mausoleum for a burial pot or for a burial plot is permitted. I don't know what the IRS would consider excessive in this case. I looked, I actually looked up the Michael Jackson case, the Michael Jackson estate tax law case, which I followed for like a decade to see if funeral expenses were ever mentioned, and they weren't. Because I know his, his actual funeral is like a million dollars. I don't know if the IRS would consider that reasonable for a really wealthy person or for a really famous person. But yeah, 706, you can deduct funeral expenses, but on the Form 1040 and the Form 1041, you can't. The executor of an estate must use the same tax year calendar or fiscal for filing a Form 1041 as that, as that was used by the decedent on the decedent's most recently filed Form 1040. Is this true or false?
False.
False. Final answer, everybody? False. Estates can elect a fiscal year end or a calendar year end. There, it's okay, they can, they can choose either one. We're talking about the Form 1041 now. Whereas trusts will generally default to a calendar year end. So most of the time, an estate can choose fiscal or calendar year. It's fine. But trusts generally default to a calendar year end unless the trustee of the trust makes a Section 645 election. And this is a special election that allows the executor of an estate and the trustee of the trust to elect, to treat the estate and the trust as one for tax purposes. And the reason why this election is kind of commonplace is because trusts are very commonly used for estate planning. So it's, it's not uncommon at all for someone to have, you know, provisions for a testamentary trust in their will, where they will, the will will instruct the executor to create a trust or their lawyer or whatever, and fund the trust with their assets. And this is especially true if you have a situation where a person has minor children, and they wanna make sure that their minor children are taken care of, or even young children, like maybe in college, and they want the assets of their estate to basically fund their children's education or whatever. But they wanna, they don't wanna just give those kids like a big lump sum of money. So they will have provisions in their will to create a trust, a testamentary trust. And then in that case, it's still a trust, but you can make an election, the, um, the executor and the trustee, they, they're not always the same people, can make an election to treat the estate and the trust as one for tax purposes. And then in that case, the trust can have the same fiscal year as the estate. Okay? You might not see this very often, especially if you don't specialize in estates and trusts, but it is commonplace as an election, once you start seeing like really wealthy people that are using estate planning, especially if they have young children or they know that they're gonna go and they're kind of doing it before they go, you know, go into hospice or before whatever illness they have gets really bad, they will do this kind of tax planning and, in their will. Okay? Now, unlike most individuals in trusts, estates are not required to report income and deductions on a calendar year basis and can elect instead to report income on a fiscal year basis. So individuals have to be on a calendar year. They didn't always used to be. There are still fiscal year individuals out there in, in the wild. They're, uh, like 80 years old, I think it was, um, 1940 or 1950, that the IRS stopped allowing people to choose a fiscal year if they were natural persons. But most individuals in the United States are on the calendar year. And then trusts, most trusts are also on a calendar year. But there are some trusts that can be on a fiscal year, and estates can always choose. There's no, like, required tax year for an estate. They can choose fiscal year or calendar year. All right. True or false? The gross estate includes only property which was owned and in the possession of the decedent at the time of death?
And false.
False.
False. Yeah, once again, tricky wording, everybody. The possession thing is what makes it false. Okay? It doesn't matter if it was in your possession. If you own it, then it's going to be included in your gross estate. The gross estate is the total sum of all assets, whether foreign or domestic, whether they're in the United States or outside the United States, whether they're tangible or intangible. Anything that I own, basically, at the time of my death is gonna be includeable in my gross estate for valuing my estate. All right. Another tricky one. A married couple may not file a joint gift tax return. True or false? We're talking about the 709 new.
False. False.
False. Is that where you get the?
Oh, true. True. That's what I meant.
Yeah. Think about gifts.
The answer is true. Okay, everybody.
You can't, you can't file a joint gift tax return. A joint gift tax return does not exist. It's not like the Form 1040. If I make gifts that are above the limit, and my husband makes separate gifts that are above the limit, like I write checks to somebody and he writes checks to somebody, and they're over the limit, then we each have to file a separate return if we make taxable gifts or gifts that are above the limit. Now, there's an option for gift splitting. Gift splitting allows a married couple only, have to be spouses, to gift twice as much without being subject to gift tax. But it's not a joint filing. I'm gonna show you what it looks like. All right. This is from the IRS website. This is not a real person. But if you look right here, this is a United States gift and generation skipping transfer tax return. This is filed while the person is alive. Okay, so gifts are made by living persons to other persons. And in this case, the person who is filing the gift tax return is the husband, Jordan J. Bronze. I'm assuming it's the husband. Jordan J. Bronze. Do you see that there's only room for one name right here? There's only room for one name. If it's a gift splitting situation, what ends up happening is the spouse's name goes here, and they have to consent. It's not the same thing as a joint return. Like, for example, if my husband, or let's say it's Jordan, okay? He gives a gift to his cousin or to his mom or whatever, and it's $30,000. Okay? That's above the gift limit. But if he splits that gift with his wife, then it's technically as if they both gave 15. Okay, and then it won't count towards his estate tax exemption amounts. He still has to file a Form 709 to report that gift because he has to show the IRS, basically, that his wife consented to split the gift. And she has to actually sign right here, consenting spouse's signature. She has to sign and date it right there, and you have to put this SSN of the consenting spouse. Potentially, the consenting, potentially, the spouse could say, no, I didn't wanna give all that money to your mom, or I don't consent to you giving all this money to your cousin. And then, and then he's not allowed to gift split, which means that the amount of that gift that exceeds the annual gift limit is going to count against the amount that he can exclude when he dies. Or I mean, his estate limit. Like, the gift tax and the estate tax are linked. You can only give away so much during your lifetime or after you die. And as long as it's below the gift limit, you don't need to worry about it. But if you go above the gift limit, if you go above the annual limit, then you start to have reporting requirements. Okay, splitting a gift will trigger a gift tax return filing. It will trigger a Form 709. Okay, and wealthy people are really careful when they do this sort of thing. They're really careful about reporting these split gifts and filing the Form 709 because the penalties are enormous if, if you have a situation where somebody gives a gift and it's above the gift limit, and they don't file a Form 709. The, the penalties are huge. And then, of course, the IRS can say, oh, well, you had a reporting requirement for this gift, you didn't file, so we're gonna count this against your estate tax exemption. You don't want that if you're a wealthy person, but it's not a joint gift tax return. It's filed by one person, there's only one spouse on there, and then the consenting spouse has to sign here. And then down at the bottom, then right there, you can see Jordan's signature is at the bottom of the form. It's his gift tax return, not hers. And she has to consent if it's a split gift. How do I say the name? Minfa. And she has to consent if it's a split gift. How do I say the name? Minfa Hernandez. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Minfa. Uh, I'm, I'm not taking, I'm not studying right now for test two. So right now I'm just observing and all this information is very good. From when it comes to time for me to study for test number two, but I have a question regarding the gift. I know the limitation is seventeen, seventeen thousand for twenty twenty-three taxes. So am I, can the taxpayer um, give a gift every year for the seventeen thousand? Or does it have any limitation up to how many years can they give that amount?
It's seventeen thousand per like human. So for example, if you have, you know, a fa, like, let's say you want to gift money to your brother because he's gonna buy a house, you're rich. Okay, my brother, let's see, my brother has uh, three kids. So it's my brother, his wife, and the three kids. I could give my brother seventeen thousand, his wife seventeen thousand, and each kid seventeen thousand.
Okay.
And, and I would not have to report anything.
Okay, that's per person as long as I don't exceed the seventy thousand.
Right, but if I were to write my brother a check, a single check for like fifty thousand, then now I have to report. And I could, I could give, I could give up to the gift limit. Well, I mean, I'm not gonna say seventeen thousand every year because the gift limit is being adjusted for inflation every year.
Right, it changes every year.
It changes every year or almost every year. So you can give up to the gift limit every single year to any one person. And you don't have to report anything.
Got it. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Question on that too. So the task would be on the donor or doni? Who, who, who will be tasked on that?
Um, the donor always pays the tax if there's gift tax. Whoever gives the gift is the one that's responsible for filing and is responsible for paying the gift tax, if there is any gift tax.
Or so did the person deceived the gift, doesn't pay anything.
Nope. At the receiver of the gift, that never has to report anything. Never has to, it's not taxable. If I get a hundred thousand dollars as a gift. Someone, then it's not taxable to me and I don't have to report anything. The only time I would have to report something potentially, when you're the receiver of a, of a gift. Is when you receive gifts from overseas or inheritances from overseas. And that, that has nothing to do with the income tax. That's a reporting requirement only. And that has to do with the whole money laundering Title Thirty-One statutes. So that's, that's a different thing. Okay?
What is the filing deadline for seven oh nine?
It's the same as the Form 1040. So April fifteenth. And then if you extend, okay. This is what gets confusing. I talked about this in the webinars. If you extend your Form 1040. Okay, if you extend your Form 1040 and you have a Form 709 gift tax requirement. You are deemed to have extended your uh, gift tax return as well. You are, it, you're deemed to have extended, but there is actually a separate extension for the Form 709. There's a separate extension for the Form 709, like let's say you don't have to file a tax return because you had zero income for the year. But somehow you have like a huge amount of money in savings. And you, you're gonna give, um, you're gonna give a gift above the gift limit, but you're not gonna file a tax return. Then there is actually a separate extension form for the seven oh nine. But if you, but if you extend your individual tax return, you are deemed to have extended your gift tax return as well. And um, but the normal filing deadline for the seven oh nine coincides with the individual filing deadline. It's April fifteenth. Got it? It's not a tax return. I mean, I mean, it is, I mean, it is, but most of the time, people are not paying gift tax. On the Form 709. They're just reporting, it's just a reporting requirement. And that's true, that's true because most people don't have assets that are worth more than twelve million dollars. Does that make sense? Most of the time, I mean, the people who have taxable estates that exceed twelve million dollars, um, it's like one percent of the population of the US. All right, let's talk about trusts. A trust must pay income tax on the beneficiary's distributed share of income. Is that true or false?
False.
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 False, uh, well, false. The trust does not pay income tax on the beneficiary's distributed share of income. A trust is like a hybrid pass through. And you're never gonna be taxed twice with a trust. It's not like a C corporation, and it's also not like a partnership or an S corp. Partnerships and S corps, they always pass through their income and their losses. And C corps don't pass through anything. But a trust is like a hybrid of those entities. A trust can choose to retain income or it can choose to pass it through. So a trust can pay tax at the trust level, which the, the rates are really high for a trust. So most of the time they don't do that. But many trusts will retain a little bit of income. A couple thousand dollars. That's actually pretty commonplace. So they have a little bit of money to pay expenses of the trust, to pay the attorneys, whatever. The trust can choose to distribute everything or the trust can choose to retain income and pay tax at the trust and estate tax rates. And then trusts also are a pass through. Trusts and estates are a pass through and they pass through income. But they don't pass through losses like partnerships and S corps do. A trust and estate cannot pass through losses until its final year, until its termination year. And that question actually comes up in my uh, professional um, software group all the time, all the time, every year. I see that question because they have a trust, the preparer has a trust, and the trust has losses. And they're saying, wha, uh, you know, that, oh, the trust was holding rentals. The trust sold the rentals after the owner died, whatever. It's now an irrevocable trust. They sold one of the rentals. And we have a big loss, but it's not passing through. And the reason why that is, is because you can't pass through losses on a trust until the trust dissolves. And the, the trust does not dissolve until all of the assets are distributed to the beneficiaries. Or there's, until all the assets are sold. So as long as the trust still has assets and is generating income, then you can't pass through any of the losses. So only until the final tax year, and that's true for trusts as well as estates. Okay? All right, let's do the multiple choice. Oh, we have, we only have a couple minutes left. We're gonna do one multiple choice. And as I said, these are all from actual um, prior exams. So this was an older exam question. All of the following can be amortized as organizational expenditures. Okay, so not startup expenses, people. We're not talking about startup. We're talking about organizational expenses of a business, which is different, different category. All of the following can be amortized as organizational expenditures for a newly formed corporation, except. Organizational meeting expenses for the corporate directors. Organizational meeting expenses for the stockholders. Fees paid to attorneys for legal expenses in conjunction with creation of a corporation. A companion attorney to file those incorporation documents. And then D, commissions to investment bankers for the initial public offering of stock. Which one of these is not amortizable or deductible?
D.
I would say B.
It is D. You're correct. Commissions to investment bankers for initial public offering of stock are never deductible or amortizable. By the corporation, ever. This is true even if the corporation dissolves, you can't deduct these costs. And the reasoning behind that is that when you actually have a company that does an initial public offering. The money that flows into the corporation from a stock sale, from an IPO or any other stock sale. Is not taxable income. It's investment. Any money that flows into the corporation from shareholders buying that stock is not taxable income. So any costs that the corporation has associated with issuing that stock. Are not going to be deductible by the corporation at all. Okay, does anybody have any questions about part two that they want to ask or any general questions?
I've been like, I'm gonna take the exam this Friday. Oh, no, I don't know why. I'm so happy to see you online today. This is my first time, you know, I've been listening to your lecture, lecture so many times already. And if, I didn't expect to see you in, 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 in videos like today. Thank you so much. I really, really enjoy your, you know, your videos.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be taking over um, some more of the uh, study. Sessions because I'm, um, I have a little bit more free time right now. Uh, if you want, you can collect with, you can connect with me on LinkedIn. I have it on my profile. It's um, you just look up. Christie Pinero. And I posted about it on LinkedIn because Calif, the IRS just sent out. On the, on the sixteenth, come on IRS, that they were extending California until the.
A last minute extension.
Last minute. And I mean, I had clients where I was like, okay, um, I never liked to e-file on that last day because. I get nervous that if the e-file is gonna get rejected and I can't trust California for anything, you know? So a franchise tax board is nuts. So I had one client where I told him, you know, where this is a last minute thing. It was right on the sixteenth. And I gave him the tax return to paper file with, you know, the disaster declaration on there. He was in the Central Valley. So he got hit with like flooding. He's a farmer. And I said, look, I'm gonna highlight this for you. You're gonna send it in. He's an older man, it's like in his seventies. Then, of course, the IRS sends out that announcement after I've already handed him all the paperwork. Even then, you know, you, you're not sure if you could e-file because the franchise tax board didn't post the extension on the franchise tax board website until seven PM. Which was nice of them, right? Good old franchise tax board. Um, Janessa, what did you want to ask?
Um, I was curious as to if you had any recommendation far as the order to take. The exam, because I was gonna do like one, three, two, but I don't know if it's recommended to do one, two, three.
I think that it kind of depends on your background. I did it in order myself. So I took part one and then I took part two and then I took part three. The, the problem is, is that I failed part two, um, the first time I took it. So I ended up doing, I ended up passing in a part one, part three, and then I had to take part two twice. So I ended up taking them in order but not passing them in order. I feel like part one, if you have a couple of years of tax experience under your belt, like with me, I had five years of experience right around there. Doing payroll and um, like simple individual returns. And I passed part one and then I passed part three, was really easy for me. And then part two was really, really hard. But what I have found is that people who have accounting degrees, who have like an accounting background. Where maybe they've studied accounting in college and they might even have a four-year degree in accounting. But they haven't done any tax returns whatsoever. Those people can pass part two really easily. And then they struggle with part one.
Thank you so much.
Mine was a very basic, general question. I'm still a little green. Um, I had someone tell me that they were a certified tax preparer, but they're not an EA. Like, well, how are you certified if you're not an enrolled agent? So CPA, yeah, I know there's.
There's certified public accountants and there's a lot of other des- designations out there that will allow people to do. A, a certain limited amount of accounting work. Even on the HAWK website, there's a certified internal auditor, there's certified management accountant. There's all kinds of different accounting designations that apply to different industries. But for enrolled practitioners, the people who are allowed. To represent taxpayers before the US Treasury Department, it's just EAs.
Yeah.
Attorneys and. That's it.
I gave, I'm, I'm, I'm under my belt. I, I, I did um, taxes some years ago. For some individual taxpayers and then I let it go. So I'm just getting back into it. And the past couple of years is, you know, kind of back in the game. And I have not heard of that, of what I was told with that. I'm like, that doesn't sound. I thought I would ask you this.
Things like a C tech call themselves certified, but.
Yeah, you could do, there's state designations, but there's no certified tax preparer.
Yeah.
Blah, blah, blah. They could say whatever they want. I saw one lady uh, the other day. I mean, I, I don't know who she is, but I was searching for um, the IRS logo. This lady had put on her website, she's an older lady. And she had put on her website, she had put like the IRS logo and then an eagle head. And then her name on the logo and then she put like certified P ten consultant or something like that, like.
Yeah, that's what I think she did because she, you know, I have a P ten and even I'm like, but. I don't know how, I didn't say this to her, but you know, I'm thinking what she's saying, like.
May, may, maybe that person was referring to the certification that the IRS was requiring some years ago. But then they, it was, it was um, refused by the um. I don't remember. So there was an opposition. There was a group that, that didn't allow that. Because it was enforcing all the tax preparers to get that certification. I went to all the tests.
Registered tax return preparer.
Yeah, the registered tax preparer, yeah.
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 Maybe that's the one she's talking about.
Um, but, but that's not valid now, that's changed, right?
It's not valid. It's not valid, but I still see preparers referring to it, like I'm. You, you can, there's a, there's a guy in one of the groups, well, that I used to belong to, who would put like. Our registered, our registered tax return preparer, our thing. And he had it all over his website, but the IRS doesn't recognize that designation anymore. And I took that test. I took it in two thousand and twelve. I was already an EA at that time. I just wanted to take it, see if I could pass it. And um, and then the IRS dumped it two years later, two years, like two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, after the loving case.
Yes, I remember. I took that same test, yeah.
Yeah.
Could it be because she worked at a chain like H and R Block or something? They certified their tax preparers.
We didn't even get it, get that far into the conversation. And I was working with her, doing some simulations, and she just mentioned what she did outside of the. That's how the subject came up.
Yeah, but she may be referring to that.
Yeah.
If she took those classes with, with H and R Block or, or whatever. Tax company, they certify their preparers is what they, what I understood. Um, when I worked there, they wanted, you know, some of their preparers to become certified if you were not an EA or. Just starting up, they would have you get certified. Otherwise, you were not, you were just a uh, beginning tax preparer is what they would call you. But maybe she referred to that.
Okay.
That's the exam, I mean, that's the course that they take up the AF, AFSP. That is required by the uh, IRS. In the, in H and R Block, they require that. I worked with them. I think uh, my last year for, with them, it was two thousand fifteen. And uh, that's when they were starting. After two years, then the IRS introduced this AFSP.
None of you really have to worry about any of that. Once you become enrolled agents, I mean, the demand is so intense right now. For enrolled practitioners, like you can write your own ticket. The amount.
Good to hear. I love that.
Like, you, I mean, I can't even tell you.
That's very encouraging.
Like, well, I mean.
Yeah, this is very encouraging.
That is.
Uh, Steve, um, Steve Mantia Melli, I'm like destroying his last name. But he's one of our forum admins and I actually uh, kind of know him. We kind of converse pretty frequently. He passed the EA exam. He took over his dad's tax practice. And he passed the EA exam two years ago, something like that. And he was pass key. And he had been working in tax up until then, right? He had some accounting background. But he passed the EA exam two years ago. And he's been like inundated. Yeah, I mean, he said he did fourteen uh, audits just in two thousand twenty-three already. That, and that, the amount of rep work that you can do, even something simple. I mean, the demand is intense. You, you could write your own ticket once you become an EA. The amount of delinquent filings, uh, correspondence with the IRS, audit representation. Even if you never wanted to file another tax return, you'd be busy forever. There's just.
How do you market for the audit?
Well, first of all, you have to, you have to pass the test. Once you, once you become an EA, because you know, what I'm talking about here is just to help you pass the exam. It's not really practical knowledge to actually represent taxpayers. Usually what I recommend is that you take courses with ASTPS, the American Society of Tax Problem Solvers. They're probably the best ones around right now to teach you how to do actual rep work, how to represent a taxpayer before the examination division, what you have to do. What you can tell them, what you shouldn't tell them, that sort of thing. Um, how to pull transcripts, the different software that you can use to do that. The sky's the limit. The sky's the limit, especially for rep work. I think once you become an enrolled agent, you should really kind of, you have to really change your thinking. Because the revenue that you will generate as an enrolled practitioner. Is like night and day compared to what you make without a license. I just, I don't know how else to put it. I mean, that was my particular, that was my particular experience, you know, like making. Almost nothing as a bookkeeper and like little ta, little tax returns and stuff like that. almost nothing as a bookkeeper, and like little ta- little tax returns and stuff like that. And then two years after I became an EA, I'm like working as a full-time accountant and making six figures. Like, it was night and day. So you, once you become an EA, you'll be able to do representation work, audit work, and honestly, even just advertising a little bit, that work will come to you. I, it's, it's hard work, because a lot of the people that will come to you that have audit problems, they're like freaked out. Do you know what I mean? You're like a psychiatrist as well as a, as a tax preparer. But, you know, there's a big difference between making three hundred dollars on a ten forty and making five thousand dollars on a rep case that might take you the same amount of time. Uh, once you become an enrolled agent, you start doing rep work, you start doing especially entity tax returns. There's really good resources for that. Learn how to do entity tax returns. Take those courses, and then you could start marketing to those people. And, you know, one S corp return is fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. That's a simple one. That's a single shareholder S corp. And then you, and then of course you have payroll, that's eight hundred dollars a year, or six hundred dollars a year. You know what I mean? Compared to doing like one forty. It's just a different, it's a completely different market. It's a different, it's different level. So once you
And you can work whole year round.
What? And you work year round?
Work whole year, yeah.
You work year round. I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that if you're working for a firm, that the experience that you're getting there is not valuable. That's not what I'm saying. I think it's great if you work for a firm, especially as an unenrolled practitioner to get like practice. But once, once you become an EA, you can write your ticket. You don't have to stay with a firm. That's just me. You know, it's not, you're not making twenty dollars an hour anymore, twenty-seven dollars an hour. And even after you become an EA, if you want to just have something steady and working for a firm, you could just work for Intuit or Tax Act Professional. They, they're, they hire EAs. And you work from the, from your home, uh, doing, wh- whenever you want, your own hours for, to help people who are filing their own tax returns. You know, it's those online professionals. And they contact me every three days, every four days. Are you have time? Are you busy? Can you sign up? All this other stuff? And I just tell them, you know, no, I don't have the time to do this, but yeah. You could do whatever you want. Once you become an EA, you can do whatever you want. There's tons of money in it. It'll feed you till you're in the grave. Telling you.
Yeah, actually, Intuit encourages all the, uh, tax preparers to work on this exam for the day that you start working for them, for the same reason, so that you can support the clients and also represent them.
They want you. They want you.
And that's why I'm here too.
Yeah.
Is the, is the pay with Intuit, um, I mean, fair? It's not like H and R Block?
It's similar.
It's like twenty-seven, twenty-nine, something like that.
But it's de- definitely better than H and R Block, like in that case then.
Yeah, well, you don't get, um, the big benefits that I have heard, cuz I'm not a huge fan of Intuit. The big benefit that I have heard is that if you work for Intuit, then you get their really kind of high-end software, Pro Connect, I think it is, at a, at a highly discounted rate.
Yeah, I had that one.
Yeah, so you could basically, you could be working for Intuit and then also have your own private tax clients on the side.
Okay.
They don't, they don't prevent that. Um, I know that there are some changes that will not let, let you have an Ethan. They won't let you have an, um, Ethan. But, yeah, Intuit doesn't do that. You could have your own tax clients on the side and also work for them online, doing the Pro Advisor, whatever. It's not Pro Advisor, but you know what I mean?
Pro Connect.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot out there that you can do. You just gotta pass that test. Then, once you do pass the E exam, once you get the license in your hand, you really have to make sure that you invest in yourself and get that CPE that you need to do like higher level returns. Okay? And to learn how to do rep work, because that's where all the money is. That's where all the money is. Once you get that license, then you could, the sky's the limit. You know, you gotta take your CPE though and learn, learn how to, um, prepare C corps, learn how to prepare S corps, learn how to prepare even simple partnerships, can be a huge moneymaker. There's a lot of money out there, once you get the license. Yep. Cuz people don't wanna deal with, people, people want a tax practitioner that can deal with all aspects of the IRS. Do you know what I mean? They don't want a situation where, oh, if my C corporation is being audited, that I have to go to somebody else. Do you know what I mean? They wanna be able to use you for everything if they trust you. And they don't, they don't mind paying extra for that service.
Right, right.
Okay, Robin, go ahead.
No, I'm just giving a thumbs up to what you're saying.
I don't, I don't know the little emojis. I'm learning. I'm learning. Anybody else got any more questions?
Thank you for the encouragement.
I've got a quickie for you, Chris.
Right, thank you. Very good advice from you. Thank you.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Yeah, what, what Facebook group would you suggest for the best learning about the, um, representation side of things?
Okay, there's two. There's two fantastic groups on Facebook. But unfortunately, with the representation group, the main representation group, that's really, really high-end reps. It, they will not let you in unless you actually are an EA, CPA, or attorney. And you basically have to be able to prove that. And they won't even let you in if you pass the exam. You have to basically state that you already have an active license. But I could, I could provide that link for you, just once, you have to pass the test first and get the license. That's probably the best group on Facebook. It's Representation Group, and it's just for enrolled practitioners. But there's a lot of, they curate the people that go in. And then the other one is the ASTPS group, which is that, um, it's, it's a nonprofit educational ASTPS, and they just do rep work, that's it. And I actually am a member of both of those groups. But for ASTPS, you also have to be a member of ASTPS to join the group, otherwise they won't let you in. But to be honest, I, I, my recommendation is to just focus on passing the test. And once you do, then, you know, then start working on learning all of that other stuff. Because honestly, I feel like if you try to do it too early, it's just gonna confuse you. Cuz you can't do any rep work until you become an EA. And honestly, the stuff that they teach you that's practical knowledge for representation is not the same stuff that I teach you to pass the test. I'm just gonna be real. Dealing with the IRS in real life, when you're like sitting there in front of an examiner, and they're telling you, they're like lying to your face, and telling you all this stuff that, oh, you have to provide this and do this, you're not prepared for that based on what I'm telling you in the webinars. What I'm telling you in the webinars is to teach the test, is to teach you how to pass the test that the IRS, IRS itself has designed. But for practical information, for rep work, when you actually do get into the field and you're like in the mud, then I feel like ASTPS is really good. Tax Help Software does some good stuff too, and then Eric Green, who is an attorney in New York, he does really good, he does really good courses too, but he's a little bit like he's like New York. He knows his stuff, uh, but he does actual litigation. So a lot of the really crazy stories that I've heard, where I have no personal experience with this stuff, uh, are stuff that I hear from people like that. You know, Eric Green, he's like doing like OICs and it's Effective Tax Administration, which is like a unicorn that hardly ever gets granted. And, you know, when I'm looking for examples to basically teach my students, then many times the examples that I get that are practical examples come from courses like that. Because, you know, I don't do a whole lot of rep work except for the small client base that I currently have. So I like to hear those kinds of stories, and, and, and that, that kind of knowledge is really useful once you actually get out into the field. But maybe for now, just kind of focus on passing the test. And then once you, once you mail off that Form twenty-three, then that's when, that's when you should start taking steps to kind of improve your, improve your knowledge. You gotta start taking CPE right away anyway, after you get your EA license in order to, um, meet the requirements, so you gotta do it as soon as you pass the test. But just until you pass, just kind of focus on, on what we're learning and what's in the textbooks and everything, because you gotta learn the party line, gotta learn what the IRS wants you to do. Okay? That's, that's when you start taking those additional educational steps. But until, until you pass the test, just learn the IRS party line. Uh, Nifa, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, uh, so I just purchased this, this course, right? And I'm still studying, but I don't, I'm not completely percent comfortable to take the test. And I'm trying to put up myself a, a day that I wanna take the test, but let's say it comes February, and I was still not comfortable that I'm ready for the test. I know that I can take the test in the month of March and April. So what's gonna happen if I wanna take it again in May? Does it enter the new year twenty twenty-four rules, or do I still study from this material that I have? Does your curriculum changes at that time?
Yes, the curriculum changes. My suggestion is to really try to just force yourself to study as much as possible based on the material that you've already learned.
Okay.
Uh, February, is it a leap year? I can't remember, but the end of February, February twenty-eighth, it's a leap year, twenty-ninth? Is the last day that you could take, that you could take the exam based on two thousand and twenty-two tax law. Um, there's no exams offered in March and April, because that's like the height of filing
Tax season, right.
Height of tax season. And then, uh, May first is when the new testing cycle begins. And actually, if you wanna know the truth, the lowest scores, the people that have the lowest scores are the ones that take it in May. And that's because the tax law is so fresh. They're, they've only had like a month or two to study the new tax laws for two thousand and twenty-three. It'll be the next tax year, right? We'll be in calendar year two thousand twenty-four, but we'll be filing two thousand and twenty-three tax returns. So in, in May, if the, the exam will start testing you on, uh, two thousand and twenty-three tax law.
Which are the taxes that are just finishing.
Yes. But up until the end of February, we're, you're gonna be tested on two thousand twenty-two. So if you're really studying two thousand twenty-two, I suggest that you try to take that exam before February. And honestly, the February slots fill up really quick after Christmas.
So I was gonna ask you that. How long, like right now, I feel that I'm halfway there. Should I schedule my, my test now for that time, or wait until December?
I don't, I think, I think if you have a particular day that you, that you know that you can get off in February, or especially if you want like a weekend slot, like a Saturday, that you should schedule it as soon as possible. And I know it's difficult because Pro-Metric has a really crappy refund policy, but otherwise, I don't think you're gonna get a seat. The, the February dates fill up really quick. You have to be careful. You might not get a seat if you wait too long.
Okay, thank you. That's good information. Thanks.
Okay.
Excuse me. I don't know how to raise my hand, so if you don't mind, I'll just interject. So I'm studying for part one right now, planning on taking part one in December.
Okay.
Based on the, what you were just answering, does that mean if I don't take part two until like, say, next summer sometime, then I'm gonna be on twenty twenty-three tax law for part two?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, good to know.
Okay, and I don't know how many changes we're gonna see. Congress has been, I mean, Congress has been instituting a lot of changes the last couple of years, which is unusual, continues to be like this. But ever since two thousand seventeen, with the passage of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we've had, we've had a tax bill or multiple tax bills every single year. I, I think, considering how Congress is, that, that you should expect tax changes again this year. That's just my professional opinion. Cuz they've been doing it every year. There's been massive tax changes every single year.
Right, every year. That's right.
Every year. Alright, everybody done? Alright, everybody. That's it for tonight. You have a great night, everyone.
You too.
Thank you, Christine.
Bye, Christine.
Bye.